...leader and mentor. She inspires us to leap over tall obstacles in a single bound. Stephanie made so many positive contributions, she deserves to be recognized. So it's the time we'd like to recognize Stephanie Garaber and Sierra and congratulate her on one year anniversary with the city, and we all look forward to working with you for many years to come.
Good.
This is very unexpected.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here and to work here and for all of you. It's been a highlight of my life. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. And congratulations on your year there, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Public communications. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text but I matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, agencies will not be prohibited, but no action will be taken. At this point, is there anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak? On matters not on the agenda today? All right, going, going, gone. Thank you very much. All right, public matters. Presentation of proclamation of Project Sanctuary declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We have Lydia Lopez and Matthew Alanis here, who are board members, I believe.
Oh, they're members. She's in the board.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna read it out here, and then I'm gonna come down and present it down there just so that we capture it on the... There. A proclamation of the Willetts City Council recognizing the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the city of Willets, and whereas Project Sanctuary is a domestic violence and rape crisis center serving victims of sexual assault and domestic violence in Mendocino County, including community members of the city of Willets, and whereas rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college, Fisher, Cullen, and Turner 2000, I guess that citation, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas staff and volunteers at Project Sanctuary encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas with leadership dedication encouragement, there's compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the city of Willets through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the city of Willets strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore be resolved that we, the city council of the city of Willets, through Project Sanctuary, and the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence, along with the United States government, the state of California. Now therefore, I, Geraldo Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Willets, to hear my complaint, proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I just have in witness thereof, I have here on two, set by hand, caused the seal of the city of Willets to be affixed on this 27th day of March 2019. I'm gonna come over here and present it to you folks. As the former police chief, I took advantage of the services you guys provided. That's why I'm really happy to work with you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, here, let me take off these... Can you clear my... All right, then, would you guys like to speak?
Well, only to say that on behalf of the board, our staff members, volunteers, and of course, the victims that we service, we'd like to thank the council for its support during this critical month, and the population as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
And under public matters, apparently we had item B has been pulled. Apparently there's been work on that. That was the MTA bus stop on Alter Court.
I'd actually like to ask the deputy city manager to explain why that item was pulled.
Yes, actually both the mayor and I called Carla Myers, the manager of MTA, and asked if they were going to have a representative at tonight's meeting. And she said yes. We talked a little bit about what was going on. She said they had received several phone calls. I said, as has the city. And she decided to come on up here and see what was going on, and she went to the bus stop. She was not pleased at all with what she saw, and she showed up at our doorstep mid-afternoon and said, can we pull this from the agenda? Because this is not done correctly. I need to discuss it with my staff. She needs to talk to the city. And so right now, it's completely on hold.
And did she, apparently according to what you told me, she'd also engaged with the Lewis's?
Yes, she talked to the Lewis's.
Okay.
And they had a very lengthy conversation about it being there, and they expressed a whole bunch of concerns. Excuse me, and she was actually quite cute. She goes, they talked about things that we never even thought of. So that's what's happening with this right now. So we'll bring it back, hopefully not to us, but bring it back with MTA probably the end of April. And figure out where that's gonna be placed.
And her sincere hope was that, and she felt that it could be worked out after discussions with the neighbors, it can be worked out, and it will not have to come back here.
All right. So now we go to item three, seat discussion regarding the operating hours of Mendocino County Museum. So we have our supervisor rep, but...
Yes, and this is, last week Supervisor Haschek came and announced that the library was considering, I'm sorry, the museum was considering changing their hours, and he told us a little bit about that. In response, council wanted to agendize that so that we discussed that, and so we did that. There is no report presented because there really isn't more than what was presented. But it does give us a chance to actually discuss the issue and ask questions of the supervisor, if he has any other news to share.
John, would you like to come up and...
Thank you. John Haschek, third district supervisor. And I'd just like to say, Lydia Lopez, I'm so proud of her because she was a student of mine at high school, and she's doing great work still. So that's really nice to see. Yeah, I brought this up because it was brought, Karen Horner, who's the director of the Cultural Services Agency, which oversees the museum, the library, and the parks, is here too. And it got brought up to the board, as I said last time, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. I'm glad that you put it on the agenda to, so that you can discuss it, to give me and the rest of the board of supervisors some direction, because I think that the museum is a critical part of Willetts' life, as well as the county. And I've heard from lots of people who were concerned and against the move of closing it on Sundays, as, since it was in the paper, and I appreciate that coverage in the paper too. But when I looked at the surveys and the data that Karen Horner presented me, it showed that when it was asked, people, you know, do you want to, would you rather close the museum on Sunday, or, or have, would you rather have it open on Sunday, or have it open on a weeknight? Eighty-four percent of the respondents to the surveys said that they'd rather have it open on Sunday. And I checked with the other counties around here, Lake, Sonoma, Humboldt, all their county museums are open on Sunday. And, and like I said before, Sunday was the second highest total of attendees when we look at the whole week. And I just think that it's, that's information to consider, and do we want to open it up earlier in the morning at nine o'clock, which is, would be the shift, you know, the shift to open at nine o'clock, I believe, and stay open later one, one day a week? Or do you want the museum open on Sunday? So that's what's before us, and I appreciate your consideration.
I'll open it up to the council first. Please speak.
Well, I talked to the supervisor Haschek about my thoughts, because I did serve on the museum advisory board and do use the museum. And my thoughts were that I definitely would like to see it open on a Sunday, particularly during the summer months, that if it was, there was a need, and it sounded like the need had something, had a relationship to education and maybe schooling, that maybe a compromise could be made, that during the winter months, we would have, you know, this, one or two nights that we were open late. But during those summer months, during the peak of the season, when people use the museum, that the museum would be open on Sunday. When I go to visit another community, I always visit their museum, and it's often on a Saturday or a Sunday. And so I think it would be a great loss to our community to have the museum closed, particularly during the summer months, on Sunday.
Good idea.
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. When you first brought it up, I wasn't all that concerned about it. I have a Main Street store, and we decided about two years ago to close on Sundays because it was our slowest day. And I know a lot of other retailers who are closed on Sunday, and so I thought, well, that makes sense. Willetts is sleepy on Sundays. But when I started talking to people in the community, they largely said, we want it to be open on Sunday. It matters. It matters to the community to feel like our county museum is here and open for visitors and residents alike. So I've come around on this, and I think that to represent the people of Willetts, I think we really should strongly urge the museum to keep the Sunday hours, and I think that would best serve our community.
Yeah, Jerry. I think so also, because if you're a working person and you have a family and you want to go to that, Sunday's a one day that pretty much that everybody has the day off. And so consequently, I just thought that it was really a poor move if that's what the supervisors wanted to do, and I'm glad that it changed, and it's open Sunday now. Thank you very much.
I agree. I think it's an important day for families to go to the museum and for visitors from out of town as well. People come on the weekends, even during the winter as well, but not just summer. But I think it'd be better to have it stay open on Sundays. And maybe you can adjust the hours somehow so that there can be an evening hour someplace long during the week. But, you know, I understand budget is always a big deal, but it seems like the wrong place to cut is to reduce the hours on Sunday.
Being the last guy here to speak, I kind of agree with my fellow council members. There's a lot of history in there. I gotta tell you, my first Hearst was, I saw when I was a kid in there. I liked the Creamery exhibit they have in there. I mean, I remember going to the original Creamery, so one of these days, maybe they'll stuff me and put me in there too, so maybe on a Sunday... So that's my two cents, John, is that I agree with my fellow council members. And thank you again for bringing this to us.
And I just want to make sure that you're clear on the process. As far as I understand it, is that it was presented to the board of supervisors, and the board sent it back because there hadn't been, it hadn't gone properly through the museum advisory board. And so the next museum advisory board that regularly scheduled is, I think, May 13?
Second Monday.
Yeah. And, but there might be a special meeting before then to reconsider this, to pass it by through that channel, so...
Do you need a letter from, from us? Would you need something like that?
I think that would be very appropriate and helpful.
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I'd like to, do we need a motion to send a letter?
Love to have a motion.
You can direct me to draft a letter for you.
Okay, yeah. Do I have to direct the city manager to draft a letter that Jerry could sign too? But the other thing is that Suprema was on the board for, as museum advisory board for at least a year, and I was on for a year or two. I think I was on for two years, maybe even three. But we don't currently have a representative on that board, and as far as I know, we don't. Maybe we should appoint somebody, at least for this particular month.
I just want to make a quick comment before we maybe respond to that. I just want to say thank you for pointing out the fact that the museum advisory board was not consulted and hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in, because one of my frustrations in having served on that, anytime you give up your time on a community board, you want to know that the, that you're giving is, is worth something. Nobody wants to sit there and, and rubber stamp. And the fact that prior to the supervisors hearing about this, that the advisory board didn't have an opportunity is discouraging, that things still haven't changed. And I hope that, I hope that the supervisors will, will change that and put some value in the, in the boards, that they ask people to give their time. We need to show that it's appreciated by at least listening to what they have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess a few more by consensus?
We should make sure we've opened it up to the public.
Yeah. Anybody like, from the public, like to speak on this?
So thank you. Karen Horner, the Cultural Services Agency Director and County Library. And I just want to clarify something, and I apologize for Haschek, if there was some misunderstanding. The museum advisory board was discussed about the hours. Just want to clarify that they were aware of the survey, and we did meet and talk about it. There just wasn't a forum present, so it wasn't a, considered official meeting, but it was brought to their attention, and we were just, they discussed the hours with us. And they were open to the idea of changing it, and that's what was presented to the board, was just the concept of changing it. And the reasons behind the change, it, no way to impact Willetts whatsoever. We want to improve the museum, and it was just working with the staff resources that we have and trying to find ways to increase visitation, because really, we're getting 2,000 visitors a year at the museum, and, you know, the Willetts Library gets 7,000 people a month. So how do we get those 7,000 people that come next door, go to the museum? And what was determined is that Sundays weren't visited individually. Sundays were really, really low. It's when there's special events in Willetts, the Roots of Motive Power have their special events, where we get the big influx of visitors. And it was very clear with the museum advisory board, we would be open on, open to being open on Sundays for any city or Roots of Motive Power event. So it was mainly just to address the law, like the wintertime, our issues and that, but we would definitely be willing to be open. And I'm open to a dialogue definitely with the city of Willetts in terms of options. I like the idea of maybe being open during the summer months and closing. We're just trying to find ways to increase more people to come. At nighttime, maybe getting people in different parts of the county to come visit, you know, people that come to dinner, maybe have a special event once a week. So that was the reason behind hours. I just want to clarify the reason for it, was we're just really trying to increase tours, and people coming to visit the museum. And the thought for opening earlier was to make it easier for schools to visit, because we want to be that educational stop for everybody to come. So, but yes, we're open to trying anything new and different, just entice people to come. But I'll definitely take, take what the city council has recommended and go back to the drawing board and come up with maybe a different option of hours and choices of what we can.
Thank you, Karen, for coming.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just see if anybody else wanted to speak to this. I guess not, so...
And just to clarify, I'm gonna write a letter for the mayor's signature, supporting keeping the museum open on Sundays. Would you like me to put anything else in there, as in, in the future, when, when these things are discussed, that the city, the city council may be addressed, and so that we can chat about it before the decision comes?
Nothing else, just, you know, the more you meet and get the word out, sometimes that becomes your press, that sometimes that's, the fact that we're discussing it, I'm sure now it's gonna get Googled by somebody, and all of a sudden now it shows up in a search. I've learned this now, and so...
Well, that's the thing, is that, so sometimes the controversy has a tendency to, to bring up your attendance, I don't know. But having that dialogue, you know, and what we can do on our end would be important too, so, but thank you.
All right.
I think Madge brought up one that we just don't want to discuss.
Yeah. Do we want to try to have a representative on the museum advisory board as we have in the past?
Do I have any volunteers?
I'd be interested.
Okay.
That would be great. We need desperately, we'd like a city of Willetts representative. Great.
Thank you.
I talked at length with Brent Walker last week about it, so I think that it could be a good fit.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
You could send the city stuff so we can get it to Karen.
Definitely.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Karen.
Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, so now we are at the no enactment of ordinance, so we're on number five consent calendar. And matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by a single motion and roll call vote by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent calendar upon request of the council members and acted upon separately by the city council. Does anybody want to pull anything? Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I recommend that we approve the calendar.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion up here? Any discussions from the public? All right, call for the vote there.
Councilmember Con.
Yes.
Februaryus.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stress.
Yes.
Informational reports. As we, right to appeal, item seven. Persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by court. City has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Commissions and agencies, the Willetts City Council meets concurrently as the Willetts Plan Commission, and I don't think the successor agency, I don't think they have anything there, so. City manager reports.
Okay, I just have a few things. First, I wanted to thank this wonderful staff at Willetts, again, now that I've composed myself a little bit. But again, thank you very much. And again, it's, it's an honor to be here. And this is a fabulous staff. It works their hearts out, and the city is, is really lucky to have each and every one of the staff members here. It's their lovely place to work with. Thank you. Couple things, the, wrote, the folks at Frontier Days came by to notify us that they are doing a concert at the rodeo grounds with a pretty famous person named Ned Ladue on September 21st. And they were, they were wondering whether it's, whether it was okay if they played till, if he played till midnight at the rodeo grounds, and was wondering if there was any requirements for permission, and we actually have no rules against that. We do at the park, it closes at 10. However, the rodeo grounds does not. We have no noise ordinance for the rest of the city. So there were, so that's what they're going to do, is they're going to play until midnight. Ned Ladue, get your tickets, brown paper tickets, they're $25 apiece. Should be a fabulous concert.
Is it Ned or Chris Ladue?
It's Ned. It's his son.
The 26th?
It's the 21st, September 21st.
I just wanted to mention that for the past two years, that has also been Peace Day, International Peace Day.
Oh.
So people that were, I, it hasn't come up in any of the meetings I've been to recently, but I'm pretty sure there, it's an every year thing. But maybe, maybe locally, we could do it on a different day. Could do it on the 20th or something, because it sounds like that's pretty solid.
At the rodeo grounds, yes, they've, they've, he's booked, and it's a, he's really expensive.
We would not want to conflict with that.
He's the biggest act Willetts has seen for a while.
Also, last year, we did it in the afternoon, as I'm calling it, so that might...
This is gonna be an evening.
Okay.
What, is it a day and a...
September 21st, and I'm not sure what day of the week that is.
Saturday.
Saturday night.
It's an equinox.
And Madge, is Peace Day used in Red Grove again this year, or the high school?
I don't know. They, it hasn't, as I said, I usually hear about it from somebody, but I haven't heard anything yet.
It's still early.
It is still early, but it's good to think about.
Yeah, it's planned all.
It was, last year, it was at Red Grove. I think they started, and some kids from the high school walked over there. Anyway, we'll, I will put that out and let people know.
We were notifying folks that we wanted to do flushing, and we kept saying, flushing is coming, flushing is coming, flushing is here. The water department completed the Hell Creek subdivision flushing on Tuesday. Next is the Bechtel Road Shaw Wayne area this Friday. And we're gonna update, you know, our website's getting updated because we were sort of on hold with the rain and all that. Kara's Manor subdivision is scheduled for next Tuesday, followed by Walker Road area on Wednesday or Thursday. And the Main Street flushing will take place the second week in April, starting at 8:30 PM on Tuesday, the 9th, Wednesday, the 10th, and Thursday, the 11th, usually finishing up about 3 AM each evening. It happens in the evening. We will be giving handgiving notices to all businesses in Main Street, starting next Monday, to give everybody a week's notice that they're, we're gonna be in their area, because we really want to make sure that everybody on Main Street knows that this is happening on their businesses, so.
Just ask, does that mean people should expect maybe the water's gonna look a little bit...
The water's gonna look a little different. It's perfectly safe. It is absolutely clean. There is nothing wrong with your water. There will be, just be a little bit of a discoloration at times, but it's nothing to be afraid, nothing to be afraid of.
Turbidity, they call it?
Turbidity. I think that is what's got them, and has fancy words for that.
Yes, thank you. Just thought people should know that.
Thank you. Music in the Park, the planning stages are coming along nicely. That's gonna be April 28th. It's an all-day, Sunday, festival-style concert. The confirmed bands so far are Lipton Spirits, One Grass Two Grass, Sam Chase, and the West Nile Ramblers. This is a free event, and we are still looking for sponsors and vendors, and it's gonna be a fun day at the park. We have, I really am asking people to get the word out, on April 24th, PG&E is gonna come and talk to us about planned outages. So important for people to know about this. It's been in the paper, it's on our website. We're trying to get people to know about this presentation. And very important, PG&E is gonna come give that presentation on April 24th.
I don't listen.
Pardon?
He wished for PG&E.
I should have called that twice, and then once.
Oh.
He won't billify him, he's just here as a spectator.
Lastly, I will be on vacation from the 8th to the 15th of April, and will be out on some medical, doing some medical things next week, on the 3rd and the 4th, and possibly the 5th. I will be doing my annual pilgrimage to the Old Settlers Music Festival in Texas, and Kathy will be the active city manager in my absence, and will do a fabulous job in conducting the meeting, the first meeting in April. So that's all I got.
Department recommendations. Administration.
I don't have anything to say, thank you.
Public safety, chiefs.
So, as many of you recall, last year about this time, a van load of a family went over the, into the ocean on the coast, the Hart family. April 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and possibly 5th, there's gonna be a coroner's inquest at the Willetts Justice Center. They will likely be picking a jury in Ukiah on the 2nd, and then they will be conducting the inquest. It's a public inquest, they're gonna try to stream the rest of that week. And one of the reasons I bring this up is because we expect a lot of media here. Also, a lot of people have been curious as to why there's been a beautification of the Willetts Justice Center. They've replaced tan bark, they've painted the outside, they've added a light to our flag. Today, the sheriff added a sheriff's department sticker to our front door. They painted, they replaced all the ceiling tiles in the courthouse, and, and the upstairs and painted the courthouse, painted the bathrooms, painted the upstairs, in, in preparation of this several-day event. So if people were curious about that, and...
Our sandbags?
Oh, yeah. One of the main things is the, the county is removing our sandbags station from the side of the building, so our community will not, during the time that those are... and painted the courthouse, painted the bathrooms, painted the upstairs, in preparation of this several-day event. So, if people were curious about that. And...
Our sandbags.
Oh, yeah. One of the main things is the county is removing our sandbags station from the side of the building, so our community will not, during the time that those are gone, will not have access to sandbags or sand. So, and incidentally, the police department's the only occupant of that building, and we rented from the county. And we've been trying for years to get our ceiling tiles replaced. I counted 48 today that are damaged by the rain and other things. And we've tried, we've asked them to paint the police department, replace carpets, put hot water in the dispatcher's bathroom, which there is none. Yet, when they have this, I probably should not do this, but they're having this event, suddenly it's got to be spruced up for the media. So, I'm sorry. Did you have comments? Any minute?
No. Good question.
Yes.
Did they replace the ceiling tiles in the strike room for the police?
No. No, there's 48 tiles in the police department that need replacement, but we had put requests in, requests in.
But the rest of them were replaced, just not the?
They replaced in the courthouse that they're going to use for three days, and upstairs, so the media will see a nice, clean justice center for the county. So, there's going to be limited parking for anybody who wants to come over here. They expect a lot of media at the event. There was another thing I was going to say. Oh, they haven't had a coroner's inquest in this county, as far as I know, for the last 60 years, but they decided it was, the coroner, the sheriff coroner, decided it was important to put all the facts out in front of the public, which I kind of agree with.
And will the, now there's a sheriff's emblem on our front door, will that stay, or?
No, the sheriff called me today, and apparently somebody told him I was not happy with that. And he said, oh, it's just going to be up for the inquest, and we're going to take it off after the inquest.
It's a shame that our supervisor, Mr. Hastrock, is no longer.
Yeah, I was hoping he was going to stay.
Yeah.
So, all right.
I was just wondering if we, if the police department has requested things, maintenance for a building that we're the renter of and they own, and so the landlord, they're supposed to be responsible for that kind of stuff, do we, do we need to reinforce?
I just put another request in today for all those things.
Can you keep it up to date with whether they respond?
I will.
Thank you.
And I believe Mayor Gonzalez was dealing with all those issues prior to retiring as well. So, I'm not sure everybody knows, the county owns the Justice Center, and the city owns the dirt that it sits on. And there's an agreement by which the city has been paying rent since the 70s, I think, 1985 or something.
Eighty-eight.
And two years, I think it used to be $35,000 twice a year. In 2017, the rent was reduced to $1 a year for the city for the next 40 years. And so, the county is not receiving any rent any longer, and coincidentally, they're not responding to requests to improve this. Well, all defense to the county, they weren't doing it before we were paying all the rents. So, the good news is we have nominal rent. All right. No other questions? All right. Thank you.
Karen, you're going to have something to run, but Chris, do you have something?
All is well.
I have something.
Do you have something? Okay.
So, I wanted to let everybody know that we are going to have, we are going to celebrate Dispatcher Week, which is April 14th. And we're going to celebrate our dispatchers and our community service officers, and it'll go through April 20th. We're going to invite the public to, you know, stop by and thank a dispatcher today. We will be celebrating them each and every week, because they do provide a lot of service, not only to the community, because they're there, they're the voice you never meet, but they also keep our firefighters and our police officers safe, and making sure that they get where they need to go. So, I wanted to let you know that we'll be bringing something the next council in regards to that.
Suzanne, do you have anything?
She has an item.
I know you have an item, but do you have anything else you want to speak? All right. Well, I guess we're done with department recommendations. So, I guess at this point...
We have some items.
Yeah. Item 10A, staff expiration of possible adoption of energy management plan. So, you're up.
Suzanne, I'm Lucy Sis, and the assistant engineer for the city. First of all, I want to say, I want to apologize, the packet that you got with the plan had some bad numbers in it, which have been corrected, so you should have the correct version in front of you. I think it's just the paper. I apologize for that. So, last year, during the council goal-setting session, it was brought to staff's attention that a priority, a fairly high priority it seemed, at least at the time, was to develop an energy management plan. And so, we kind of got all the goals and found out what your priorities were, those of you who were here, and then went back, I went back to my desk and I went, what the heck is that? And so, I did some research, and basically found out that it can be a lot of different And so, what I've put together for you to look at is basically what I think is something that we could handle, but maybe even barely. It has five main components to it. One is conducting energy audits on our buildings and our pumps. Another part is reviewing our energy bills for errors and strange anomalies that could be there. Another part is checking that the maintenance of our equipment is on schedule. And the fourth is having, writing an RFP and looking at a feasibility study for renewable energy projects in town. The one project that stands out, and I know the city has kind of been interested in this before, is looking at renewable energy projects that would offset the energy costs at our wastewater treatment plant, and that's namely because we already have solar up at our water treatment plant. And the wastewater treatment plant is the second highest user, if not the first highest user. They're comparable, the two plants. And then the fifth part is actually constructing the capital improvement plans that the audits or the feasibility study might suggest would be beneficial to the city. So, since I wrote this, I've talked to June, our financial director, who was here, and she has informed me that she had a pretty good experience when she was working for the city of Rio Vista, I believe, and working with consultants that were free, actually. It was a federal energy efficiency funding source that she, she had experience with consultants who did actually most parts of this plan, so that's kind of exciting to know that. So, I put the plan together, it's kind of a lot of tables, so I hope it didn't overwhelm people. I know it certainly could. But basically, what I was trying to show you are what I think are some essential elements in a plan, and also give you an idea of what kind of staff time that could take to implement that plan. But I did want to let you guys know that there is a possibility that we could get consultants on board for free to do several of the different components that I've outlined in the plan. For example, I do have someone in mind that I've been talking to, and I've been waiting to speak with you about reviewing our bills, and it's actually a company, they do it for free, and the savings that they find, we split with them for three years. So, already, the staff time could be cut down if we decide to move forward with this idea. But I really, going into this kind of project, I didn't know what council wanted. I knew that you wanted an energy management plan, but I didn't really have much more direction than that. So, tonight, I really would like to get some guidance. I've proposed what's in front of you, and I'm hoping that I could get some direction, and maybe you just like it, and you say, yes, do it, do all of that, and then I can do that for you. I think it's important just to reiterate that we have a lot of projects going on. We're busy. Our office is busy. This would probably fall mostly on me. I certainly can do this and work on this. It just means that other things will not happen as quickly as maybe we want them to. If I can get consultants on board, then I think that could be a real win, because it would be kind of minimal time on our end, and hopefully we would get benefit and see what kinds of energy efficiency or renewable energy projects that we could implement that would be beneficial, and then kind of come back and see what our choices are, and have a different discussion about that. So, the plan is broken up into three sections. It's basically action items, and then it's kind of a cost breakdown, what I thought it would cost in dollars, in staff time. And then it kind of summarizes why those elements are important. That's how it's supposed to be broken down, so I hope you got that out of it. But at this point, I would like some feedback on what you guys think and about what I put forward.
I'd like Greta to go first. Did you want something?
Sure. Okay, so I obviously wasn't here when this was declared a concern, but it is definitely one that I share, and I think having an energy management plan for the city is important. Not only because it's the right thing to do for the environment, but it also has the potential to save the city money and codify our behaviors and procedures citywide that have an impact on energy usage. Personally, I'm more interested in small changes that we can make citywide that will help reduce our energy use, rather than adding additional large projects. Like you said, you guys have plenty of those on your plate. I'm a little disturbed that reviewing bills and pump maintenance are considered like above and beyond. I think those should be standard operating procedures. We should, I mean, everybody who has a household checks their bills on a regular basis to make sure they're right.
Yeah, we do.
We should be doing that at the city, right? And then maintaining our equipment so that it's operating at its maximum capacity is also important.
So, I do want to speak to that point. You know, by putting this on here, it's not to say that it's not being done, it's just to say this would be a way to kind of monitor and track and verify that, and kind of collectively present it to you. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and also to clarify, when we get energy bills, they can be incredibly complex because of the number of systems that we have. And so, just looking at them, it's not always clear whether they're correct or not, and it actually requires to really dive into a bill for an operation as large as the city with a wastewater plant, a water plant. It's actually quite a complicated undertaking to audit an energy bill, and probably something that we don't have even the expertise to fully grasp. This is, I want to draw a parallel to when you're looking at complex medical bills, like in a hospital, you go to a hospital, and all these things happen to you, you have no idea whether the bill is right or not. That is why, on the HR side of things, and the workers' comp side of things, you hire companies to look at the medical bills and to, like, correct, correct, correct. And it is a standard thing to hire a company to correct your workers' comp bills. They save you, for every $100, they take a portion, because we can't, most doctors can't figure that out. So, there's companies who actually specialize in looking at those bills.
We have probably like 50, I want to say, meters every month.
Yeah.
So, it would probably take like some software and some tracking.
Yeah.
Expertise wouldn't hurt.
But I'm really excited by the idea of, if a firm wants to do this, take a portion of the upside, they do it for free, they go in and scour it. That's a really positive thing.
I like that idea, too.
Yeah. The idea, though, of giving half of any savings over is hard to swallow, though.
It's for three years, this particular company that I've been talking to. So, it's not forever.
But, yeah, that...
And we don't have to do it. I, there is software out there. I could enter data, I could look at it, you know. I'm not going to lie, it would be a learning curve for me.
Oh, yeah. But again, I think the, I would recommend having a company do it, that's, that's the job.
I would, too. I would, too.
That would be my preference, just because Suzanne's our assistant engineer, and she's designing things for us and doing engineering projects, and that means she can't do that. So, anyway.
Yeah. I guess in my mind, I sort of imagined that that would be something that would fall in the finance department, not necessarily the engineering department.
No.
Okay. All right. So, then the other thing that I wanted to say is I think that as far as an energy management plan, if we really are going to go after small achievable things that can be done citywide, if we are going to make some kind of procedural list of how we approach things for citywide energy savings, then there should be other things in here, like how we decide to purchase vehicles, whether we're looking at mileage or hybrid, what kind of roofing options we do. When we look at replacing roof on City Hall, are we looking for things that are reflective and heat away from our building? Do we have a landscape plan so that we say we're planting trees to reduce heat load on buildings? If we are going to update roofs, are we putting in solar tubes so that we can get daylight, natural daylight, instead of having to use lights? I mean, these are kinds of things that you work into a plan. It's not something that you have to enact each of those things right now, but whenever decisions are going to be made, city staff has something to look at to say, these are things, these are things that we should be looking at to help reduce our energy usage. So, I think, I think it comes down to a matter of setting an example for our community and looking at managing our resources well. And those are the kinds of things I would like to see in an energy management plan. Okay.
A lot of those things are often called sustainability plans, by the way.
Okay.
Maybe we can expand that, you know, an idea is to expand that and say an energy and sustainability plan. That's sort of the...
Suprema.
I just want to say thank you for the time that you've put into this. I know that we have lots of, lots of goals that we set, and I wasn't, I didn't feel as though this was one of our priorities. As I recall, that it was something that we gave direction, that maybe at a meeting that we would like to see, and I felt with the direction that you were given, you supplied what was asked. But Greta brings up some very, very good points about things that we do need, but I think that we need to keep this in mind, and when we're talking about the budget, then we should revisit this idea, because it wouldn't be fair to give direction for you to do more without an expectation that we need to have the funds allocated to get the job done. Or have been presented with a presentation from another company with the details of what they can offer us.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, this is a starting point, and so it's good to get your feedback. And I think, I mean, my thought, based on what you two have just said, is, you know, that type of kind of like broader plan for future implementation and projects, it would be involved more than just me, essentially, right? There would be planning and finance perhaps, or building, I'm not really sure, but...
For example, if we set, one thing we could do is set sustainability goals. For example, if we set, one thing we could do is set sustainability goals or guidelines. And therefore, if we set those guidelines and gave people, our staff members, when they do things, for example, in the procurement process, if there's a sustainable option, that that would be given weight. And so that would sort of be an automatic thing. And so it doesn't necessarily involve any staff time at all, except we just have the goal and we implement that goal. And so that would be a really nice way of doing this also, is developing these sustainability goals.
Right.
So all the staff can follow that.
Yes, staff-wide, department-wide.
Department-wide, it's like, oh, there's a sustainable option, we're going to choose that. And the council has sort of blessed that as an option.
Who would take the lead on something like that?
I think your office would probably help with the, well, planning's slammed, everybody's slammed.
I know.
Just developing sustainability goals, we could probably see what other cities have done because that's not, that's a fairly, I've seen it before, and we would not have to reinvent that wheel.
Stephanie, could that also be kind of like, not saying it has to be in the budget as numbers, but maybe like a preamble in our budget?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. When we make decisions, we look at this.
That way, if we did choose to take the $10 more option, but because in the long term, it saves us money, et cetera.
Yes, when we choose thermostats, we choose energy-efficient thermostats. When we choose light switches, the kind that turn off automatically when you leave the room. So that we have some principles to guide us when we do our work. And that revolves around every day. We don't have to set aside staff time to do that.
Okay.
Well, I agree with Greta's comments, but I also think that that should not preclude some larger projects if they are in fact going to save us money. Because I noticed, for example, that the wastewater treatment plant costs about $180,000 a year for the electricity. That's a big chunk of money. And a few years back, about five years ago, I was part of an ad hoc committee and we looked into the possibility of a solarization of that. And it actually, at that time, and there's undoubtedly potential obstacles, it wasn't a finished product, but the estimates that we had from a pretty reputable local outfit at that time was that we could solarize and it would not cost us anything extra for the first several years. It would be, you know, zero impact. But after a few years, and I forget the exact number, but maybe after four or five years, we start saving more and more and more money, even paying back a large loan to do it. And, you know, and I realize that's a big project and you have your hands full, but if we need to contract out to get something like that done and the savings pay for it, that's, I think we should be looking at that as well. The smaller doable actions, yes, a little improved, changing our kind of cultural awareness of energy conservation and what those choices are, those are all really good things. And I think this is a really good start, but I was a little concerned that we didn't really even begin to look at potential capital improvements until the third year, or actually until the fifth year. So I'm thinking, well, gosh, $180,000 a year, why don't we look at that sooner? I'm really, I like to look at very specific, well, and also ask the question, we don't even really know what the energy use is compared, comparison between our different facilities when we have all these different meters. We don't know, how much does this building use? How much does the water plant use? How much does the sewage treatment plant use? In a kind of a digestible format, because what we get is these enormous bills that are very difficult to read. So I think that, starting with auditing and-
Yeah, I think the audits would help us get to that.
Finding out what our status quo is and then identifying places where we can start saving even incrementally. I think it's all good. But I do think this is a high priority because I think it is, it costs the city a lot in cash, it also costs our environment. And we're way behind on addressing, trying to reduce global greenhouse gases and use of fossil fuels and electricity uses and a lot of stuff. So, you know, I think this is, we want to be a leader, I think, and be ahead of the curve. We used to be known as the solar capital in the world, or the United States or whatever. We have a lot of resources and a lot of enthusiasm here. So I want us to be a leader in energy conservation, not just the minimum.
Larry, did you want to speak?
No.
You know, I'll just end it with, I don't want to bog you down. My opinion is I don't want to bog you down with a lot of stuff. I like the idea of the free energy audits and that the, I think the conversation needs to continue, whether it be in part of the budget or whether it be kind of a preamble as far as we're doing. I agree with Suprema that, actually, I looked at the initial, and I, honestly, your numbers, I'm not as much a number person as much as I just, I kept thinking, how much and what aren't you going to do if you're doing some of this, is what I was thinking when I read all this.
That's what I was thinking.
And since we had our-
That's what I was thinking as I was writing it.
And I'll tell you, I mean, when I drive by and I see you guys out there wearing your little vests and where we've got things happening, I'm not saying it's not important, Ash, but I'm just saying that we, I think I was a part of a conversation the other day where they talked about how to eat an elephant and you don't do it all at once. You start off by eating a little bit.
Yeah.
And I think that this is an elephant that we take some small bites out of and move forward. And as a city, we look at it in the budget and we look at things. And if there is a consultant in there, I just want to make sure that we don't jump into something, we think we're saving money and in the end, we get burned.
Yeah.
Because we've also been on the receiving end of the, we're saving money, but then all of a sudden, we hitched our ride to the wrong one and I-
I know. And that's where the five years came from, solar match.
Yeah. So I guess I would want to take a deep breath, go, this is what we can do this year, this is what we could do with, always with that target of moving forward. And as we look to buy things, what I've noticed over the years is that things are becoming either more available, as they become more in vogue, prices on some things come down. And all of a sudden, what would look like something that looked like a cosmetic, maybe nice-to-do thing, now all of a sudden is just standard way of operating. And to the extent that we can implement those things, that's good, that is good for the environment and also good for our bottom line, I'm for it. But I also don't want to monopolize all your time unless you found a grant that's not only going to pay for your salary, but for somebody to come do some of this, then, so that we can do that, then absent that, I think we need to eat this elephant one piece at a time.
Yeah, I think that, you know, looking for consultants to do audits, I think that's a good step. I think that, I'm not sure now where you are collectively about the billing and hiring a consultant.
I'd be curious for a separate presentation down the road.
I really like the idea of seeing what somebody else can do for that, just, yeah.
I mean, anything that we can look at to save money and whereas, as opposed to, again, trying to eat that whole elephant once, if you come back and say, hey, I've looked at a couple firms, and obviously, I know how that could be, that could be a couple hours today and a couple hours, a couple weeks from now, and all of a sudden, you come back to us in a future day and say, here's some options, and they're willing to come talk to you guys, then I'd be willing to entertain that because it's something that isn't going to take up all your time and something that's doable. And again, I know I hate giving people some of our money, but if it's something, you can sit there and watch them do it, and maybe in the future now, we're doing it ourselves, then so be it and maybe, but I also hate being taken for a ride for like 10 years from some entity that, and that way, if we can recoup some of what we're losing, even if we had to pay somebody part of, you know, three years' worth of splitting the savings, then I'd be for it as long as moving forward after those three years, we're not stuck.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate that, as Stephanie said, we're not reinventing the wheel. Other cities and jurisdictions have done similar things, and we should benefit from their experience and locate the kinds of help or contract out with people that have a good reputation, are experts at this, and hopefully don't cost us too much of the, whatever the benefits are from it. But I agree with you, I'd like to have that brought back because I think that's a good place to start because we really need to identify, we need to get the data, like a baseline, here's where we are now, and look at the places where we might be in fact already overpaying or, you know, billed erroneously.
I think that we have pretty much maxed out all the people and all the time that we can have as a city. And I also think that maybe a good place to start would be to check the billing that you mentioned that, to kind of figure it out. You've started it, and then there's a group of people that can come in and help you with it. That may be a good place to start, just to understand that. But I really think that we're pretty much maxed out and we have projects that are going to be going for the next five or six years that are going to really be pretty good-sized projects. And our staff is not going to be able to handle all that. And so, or this is my estimation on anyhow. And so I think we ought to tiptoe through this personally.
So I would be happy to see us initiate the free energy audits within the next 12 months. And I would also be pleased to see us put together some kind of an energy efficient guideline for citywide departments to be using for their upcoming decisions over the next five to six years regarding all of these projects that we already have going. And then putting a pin in the rest of it until we can collectively agree on what the right course of action is.
I'd agree.
And in terms of some guidelines, you know, I've sort of been involved in sustainability plans, especially in Texas, believe it or not, they care about that. But with Texas Parks and Wildlife, and I think that we could actually come up with very easily some sustainability goals. I mean, simple things like, you know, when we buy paper, it's recycled, we use recycled material and things like that. There are already lists and things that we can do, and I can help with that. And that's certainly something I'd like to help you with.
And I think by doing that, by slowly changing the culture citywide to be regularly considering sustainability and all the decision-making, then that leads us down the road much closer to, you know, solar plants and becoming leaders in the larger community.
And just changing the practices, like, I'm on a no straw kick, you know, and bringing that to the rest of the, you know, the city and not buying straws anymore and things like that.
So Suzanne, do you have this from us?
I think so. I just want to quadruple check on-
I think we're good. I think what we might want to do is sort of reshape this and come back to you with like, how does this look?
Yeah.
And maybe we'll do that.
Do I have anybody from the public that would like to speak onto this? We closed the chapter, at least for tonight, on this. Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
So Karen, I think you're up next.
Karen Stevenson, HR department. Before you have a request for approval for a new job classification for a construction specialist and amend the master classification and compensation schedule to include the construction specialist to be effective July 1st. And this position was negotiated during bargaining, and it's basically going to be in the Public Works department. It is a journeyman level, and we actually have two folks that are currently doing the tasks and responsibilities, they're just not getting paid, they're working on the pass. And so what the union and the city negotiated was to still have the entry level as the Public Works Maintenance Worker One, and then with a two, they have to obtain some certification from the Water Department because it makes them more valuable. And then what we would like to do at the two level is to allow them to split off either to the construction specialist or to the maintenance worker three. So they will be at the same price, same salary, which is 59C at $39,562.104, top step at I think it's a great retention tool. Public Works is currently one of the lowest departments in the pay rate. They work very hard, they're very diligent, and it allows us the ability to utilize them more effectively. And the title that we've chosen gives them more flexibility and the jobs that they would be doing.
So Karen, would you start a new step so then they would work their way through the list?
Well, what they do is they, they would go up 5% or above where they currently are. So if they're, if they are currently a top step at a worker two, then it would, obviously the next step, the next classification is higher. So we'd love to get the 5% above the current top step. Sometimes it's a little more than 5%, but usually it's right around that.
And then they would start that new-
And then they would start that next level, but yes.
So not, it wouldn't all be the big hit all at once, then?
No, no, not at all. It'll take, it'll take a while for them to work. We currently have two, like I said, two people that we would grandfather into those positions because they're probably doing the work. And that would leave us with two construction specialists, and then we would have two Public Works Maintenance Worker Twos. And one is currently working on his third, so.
Does anybody have any questions, Karen? Okay. Does anybody in the public have any questions? Okay.
Perfect. Make a motion for the staff recommendation.
Do I have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Nothing from the public? All right, call for the vote.
Councilwoman Combs?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stana?
Yes.
American Subs?
Yes.
And this is, remember, this isn't just for that, it's also for the classification schedule.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. So now we are at City Council Committee Boards and Agency Reports. Do you have any?
I guess. Who do you want to go first?
I'll let you go first, Karen, I'll work my way this way.
Okay. So MTA, I wasn't here at the last city council meeting, I was stuck in a snowstorm at Denver, Colorado, and I heard that there were some folks here that came to the meeting. As soon as I got back, I met with us individuals that lived in the neighborhood, I met the city staff. We had an MTA meeting today at 1:30 in Ukiah, and we discussed that matter as well. So as you know, we're looking for some solutions. But the thing I really want to talk to you about tonight is that MTA is busy trying, we have a goal set that in three to five years, that we're going to be replacing seven vehicles out of the fleet, two cutaways, one 35-foot bus, and four dialer rides in Meniscino County and converting them over to electric buses, electric vehicles, which is wonderful. And I asked how much of, what percentage of that fleet it is, and so it's about 10% of the fleet will be zeroing issues, which I think is absolutely wonderful, and that is a high priority for MTA. And so just wanted to share that. The rest of it was just routine budgets and things of that nature.
Ash?
Okay. So EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation, met on March 14th, and they're continuing to deal with tightening up the review and guidelines and process for loans. And they have a lot of money to loan, so if there's any businesses out there that want to take advantage of that possibility, you have to have already sought a bank loan and been turned down. But if you're in that position, if you're a new startup or weren't able to qualify for a bank loan, you're a perfect candidate to look to EDFC. They're doing a lot of outreach marketing on that.
Imagine if someone were inclined to contact EDFC, I know their offices are in Ukiah, that would be where they would get all of them.
Yes, yeah. And they have a website, edfc.org, I'm pretty sure. It's actually a not-for-profit organization, and most of the money is federal money, and it's a revolving fund. So as they loan out money and get paid back, then they have more money- So as they loan out money and get paid back, then they have more money to loan out, and there are some grants as well. So EDFC continues to do a lot of housekeeping, and they just hired a new part-time office assistant. The ENSWA, which is Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority, which is a joint powers of all the different jurisdictions in our county, dealing with solid waste, and is also known familiarly as MendoRecycle. They met on March 21st. That organization is going through some reassessment of things, because we haven't been able to fill the general manager position for quite a few months now. And there's also been some changes of personnel from different jurisdictions on the board of ENSWA. At the most recent meeting, the new representative from the city of Fort Bragg volunteered Fort Bragg to help do another recruitment, a little more effort, to see if we could find a general manager. Absent a general manager, the other option seems to be to privatize a good deal of the actual work of household hazardous waste collection and treatment and all of that that ENSWA has in the past done. I am very reluctant to give up the public oversight of what ENSWA does. The privatizing would still leave some gaps of things that a private company really isn't suitable to do, and so we're just in this transition where we don't quite know how it's all going to fall together or apart. The county is also reassessing their commitment to the position that was the general manager, because the county shared a lot of those costs. So it's an interesting time to be on the ENSWA board.
Madge?
Yes.
What about the Cold Creek? Would that be affected by, if they went to a privatize?
No. Cold Creek has separate contracts with all of the haulers now, either with the haulers or with the jurisdictions, and all of them, like we did last meeting, have now approved the new tipping fee, and they have pretty long-term contracts, so it doesn't really affect Cold Creek or my or the other.
Thank you.
And then the final thing that I've also newly, relatively newly, was appointed as the substitute, or the alternate, for the Sonoma Clean Power Board, and that is now the provider of electricity for about 87% of all of our electric use in, you know, in the city of Willets, but also in the county. The only exception is Ukiah, because they have their own electric, the city of Ukiah provides the electricity. But everybody else pretty much has opted into Sonoma Clean Power, unless they went to the trouble to opt out. And so I am going to be the alternate at the next Sonoma Clean Power meeting, which is next Thursday. Sonoma Clean Power, I'm going to just segue right now, because it happens to be, they're going to be presenting to the Energy Forum that WEL is sponsoring tomorrow evening. So people who are paying their electric bills, it's from PG&E, but the electricity is coming from Sonoma Clean Power. If you want to find out where it's coming from, and what they're doing to try to reduce greenhouse gases, and how that affects you as a ratepayer, come tomorrow night at 7:00 to the Willets hub. But I will also be reporting at the next meeting from the Sonoma Clean Power Board. They're dealing, it's a big responsibility, really, because they're providing the electricity for Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, and they are really trying to, again, it's a public entity, not a private company. So they're not profit-driven, they're trying to give us the best deal, and the best deal for the environment at the same time. So I'm really, I'm really pleased to be part of that.
Madge?
Yeah.
Have they discussed at all at this with the PG&E saying that if, during the fire season, that they would turn off the power? How does that affect this?
I did not go to the most recent previous meeting of Sonoma Clean Power, it didn't come up at the first meeting I went to, and I don't know if it comes up, if it will come up next week at that meeting, but I will, I will find, I'll ask about that, yeah. They did discuss the, sort of the outfall of PG&E declaring bankruptcy, and it's going to take at least a year to figure out what that means. But Sonoma Clean Power is very much involved in the negotiations around what happens as PG&E divests, or declares bankruptcy, or whatever they, how, I know that their lawyers are looking at it really closely.
Okay, thank you.
Madge, today, supervisor, Jertie and I were talking about solar power, and the conversation was, if you're producing solar in the area where Sonoma Clean Power, for example, in our area, when you are producing more than you're using, is PG&E benefiting, or is Sonoma Clean Power benefiting, because the invoice has PG&E on it, but we all know that we get billed from Sonoma Power too? And does, does a household member or business need to call and specify that their excess is going to Sonoma Clean Power, or PG&E, or do you know the answer?
I am pretty sure, but I, oh, I shouldn't really say that I'm sure. I would guess that it's going to Sonoma Clean Power, because they're the supplier of the electricity. PG&E is the delivery system, so it seems like it should be Sonoma Clean Power. But I will, I will ask that question, thank you, it's a good question.
Larry, did you have anything? Larry, did you have anything? Did you have anything? Oh, okay. I think both Larry and I have meetings on Monday, he's got, I've got LAPCO on Monday, and you've got MCAG on Monday, and I did not go to the League of Cities Policy Committee meeting, which is meeting right now in Costa Mesa, for obvious reasons, so, so I'll let you guys know at the next meeting about LAPCO, so. All right. Councilmember reports and recommendations, does anybody have any? Good and well here?
I just want to repeat this, that they, tomorrow night is this Energy Forum, and in addition to Sonoma Clean Power, we have several of our local wonderful experts, like Keith Rutledge, and Michael Appleman, Aperson Energy, John Housecheck's going to talk about the county-level stuff, and so that should be a kind of an exciting meeting of lots of different expertise. And then also, WEL is co-sponsoring, but Claudia Bening is organizing this wonderful Health Summit on April 6th. It's a Saturday, and it's a daytime, 11 to 5, at The Grange. So there will be a lot of resources about how to keep healthy, if you want more information about that.
Any other good and well here? All right, well, we have one, two, three, four items on our closed session notice, Conference with Legal Counsel Pursuant Anticipated Litigation, two cases, Conference with Legal Counsel Pursuant Government Code 54956.9, existing litigation, Gennett Brown versus City of Willets, and Conference with Legal Counsel Pursuant Government Code, existing litigation, Neuroth versus the County of Mendocino, and Item D, Pursuant Government Code, Labor Negotiations, City Manager, and Chief of Police, so. We'll report out if we have something to report out.